Okay, with that, I will call the meeting to order. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And as we begin our meeting, I would like to welcome our new trustee, Tony Macarini. Thank you very much. Joining us and accepting my appointment as trustee. We appreciate you being here. All kinds of good stuff underneath this bench.
There's not even a bit of lint there. The cleaners are doing their job.
All right. So with that, let us start with the minutes. What we have for today is July 28th and August 5th. I know Fran, you had requested that absent be excused. If you look at the way we do our resolutions, it's absent slash excused. So I'm going to recommend that to Jen so she can make that adjustment for these. Actually, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So actually, I need to...I have a correction.
Sure.
Where it says discussed library charter and the need to revise, I do not think that that was a main topic. And I think that it could impact the library in ways that would be unfair of us.
Is this the 28th?
It's the 28th.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Do we want to just delete that sentence?
I think it should be straightened.
We'll delete that sentence. Got it? Thank you. Any other edits, adjustments, questions?
Yes. So you referred to the absent slash excused in the table for motions or resolutions. I was actually referring to the listing in Jen's...
Yes, and I was figuring we'll just put a slash excuse at the top, similar in the same context. That's what I was trying to articulate. Any other comments or edits on either of the minutes? Okay, you're none, I'll take one.
Of course, I wasn't here for the prior... But I noticed that...I can't find it right now. That was to be a project possible, looking into...
If I can just ask if you pull the microphone down.
Looking into speed bumps on two streets.
Temporary speed bump, sure.
And as I discussed with you, I'd like to at least broach the possibility of including Grave Street on that for reasons I've also...
So here's what I'm going to suggest, because this is to review the minutes of prior meetings. Let's bring that up when we're talking about traffic, et cetera.
That's right. You and I can have a conversation about that. The speed bumps thing is me.
Great. Any other comments, edits? Do I have...did I have a motion?
Nope, but I'll make one.
I need a motion. Okay, Amy motioned, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mel Corca. Any...all in favor?
Aye.
And Tony, you were going to abstain?
I'm staying because I wasn't here.
You weren't here. Fran, did you want to do same since you weren't here?
You don't have to.
You don't have to. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure.
Sorry, on which are we...
This is the minutes.
These are the minutes.
I'm here now, so.
Great. You're an aye. Great. Okay. Because we have a special guest, a very important person to the village here, I would like to suggest that we move up. I would like to do my sewer report now. And then, so we have Les Kuhn, who is our water and sewer operator from H2O. They began operations on August 1st. So if no one objects, I'd like to just do my sewer report now and then ask Les to share a couple of positive words. And so that's in my book.
I just had a quick question. Is that current in your...
It's in...yes, and it's towards the back.
Thank you.
No, it's about in the middle.
It's mayor?
Under the mayor tab.
Nope, this is all. Good, okay. This is...
So this is focused on July. We did have two test reports, two lab reports in July that were in full compliance with our Speedy's permit. DEC did an inspection on July 15th, which resulted in a report that stated the plants were, quote, "operating in a satisfactory manner" and no major deficiencies were noted. The full report is available on the Village website under Sewer Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant Operations, towards the bottom of the page. We received no odor complaints in the month of July. We have not received an odor complaint about the wastewater treatment plant since the second week in May. DPW foreman Jake Smith, I mentioned this the last time, he had set up an alarm to go off if the EQ tanks get too full. We have an approved contract with Vector Security to update the alarm system at the wastewater treatment plants, and we'll update with timing when that's confirmed. And that's something that you, Les, need to connect with. The contract is for a certain number of contacts or points, and you and Jake just need to figure out where you want those to go. We received a consent order from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on July 3rd via email. This consent order stems from the notice of violation dated April 14th, 2025, from the DEC site inspection visit on March 21st, 2025. DEC has amended our consent order, reducing the fine to be paid to $5,000 from $19,600 or $800. The remaining amount is suspended as long as we comply with the requirements of the consent order. The consent order was approved by the board at a special meeting on August 4th. It has been signed along with the fine and sent to DEC as required. The original consent order and the revised one are also on the Village website on the wastewater treatment plant page at the very bottom. And H2O Innovation, Operation and Maintenance LLC officially became our water and wastewater operators as of August 1st, 2025. And we are not only looking forward, we are happy to be working with them to maintain our wastewater treatment plant operations and also to lay out long-term maintenance and capital plans to ensure we stay up to date with our operations. I can report, I have the report of the...this is the June report. We had four samples taken in June. The first one had, the suspended solids were too high in the old plant, but since then, both plants were in full compliance for all items. And so I think that's sort of the main piece. Oh, there's something about...I'm not used to these reports yet. There's a flow quantity that I'm probably not going to find. Oh, there it is. Perhaps you might, I don't know if you remember what our current average flow is for the plants?
So the average flow that I've been seeing since August has been right around 5,000 gallons.
In the old plant?
In the old plant, and right around 32, 35 in the new one. That's just for August, though.
Oh, no, understood. What's interesting is, and this is something that we can work on and perhaps report a little bit more about, the way the prior flow meter was reading. The old plant was running at about 10 to 12, or 8 to 12, so maybe about 10, and the new one was more like 35, 37. So it'll be interesting to understand. Some of that is what gets sent back to the beginning as to whether or not that ultimately gets double counted or what have you. But those are really nice running rates, actually.
Yeah, I'll take it.
From where we were. So once again, this is Les Kuhn. He is our water and sewer operator. And if you want to just say a few words about...
Sure.
And maybe if you go over there, then Hudson can get you on the...
Absolutely.
On the screen. Can you even turn on the mic? It's right on top. Maybe it's on already.
Testing?
Keep talking.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, guess I got a little bit better. All right, so hey, my name is Les Kuhn, Senior Area Manager for H2O Operations. We are super excited to be here with you guys. Quick little update of our first 11 days, how's that sound? Initially, I'd like to congratulate Delaware and the Village team on getting the plant to where it is. It's been a great start, so things are going down a better path. I'm sure you all are very well aware of that. Continuing on in the last 11 days, we actually did come up against one little hiccup. We started to see an increase in ammonia in the old plant. Well, through some proactive approach of doing additional testing of ammonia, we were able to track it down to being some solids that were building up in the clarifier. And working with Jake and LJ, we were able to get after that right away, really fast, and remedy the issue. So huge props to those guys for making it happen.
And just to clarify, the clarifier is three processes in, right?
Well, the clear...if I said clarifier, that was my mistake.
Well, I probably got it wrong. But it's, what you were testing was as it came in and then eat through each of the pieces?
Yes, we followed it through...
And it went up at one point?
Yes, we followed it entirely through the entire process. It was a great learning experience for LJ. It was kind of like that light bulb in the cartoon where it goes off. And he's like, hey, you know, it made sense. So great stuff there.
And I just want to commend you. This is a tribute to how you approach it, is to look ahead, not wait to see, oh gosh, we've got a problem after the fact. So thank you.
No, absolutely. You'll find that I try to be very proactive. I do try to be ahead of things. So when I come with an issue, know that I don't want to necessarily, but it's for everyone's best interest, of course.
Absolutely. Does anybody have any questions at this point? I'm very grateful that you came tonight. I think it's very appreciative. We are very appreciative. I expect that we will do another public information meeting in September, which will be an opportunity to speak, you know, a little bit more in depth and very specifically just about the sewer.
Looking forward to it.
But it's also nice to have the opportunity for those who are looking at our regular meeting to see that we've got very specific updates and we've come a long way since the beginning of the year.
All may have had you.
Yes. So thank you and welcome aboard. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, back to our regular programming. The first item on the agenda is public spaces appointments. I believe that I put in front of you a resolution. I have one, two, three, four, five, five members to appoint. Ash Bradley McCord has been the chair of the committee. The committee, we had a meeting a week ago, Saturday, and the whole group discussed, a couple folks...oh, no, actually, everyone was there. But they felt that instead of doing a Saturday morning, a Monday evening would work better for everyone. I believe we are doing the fourth. We put it on the website. I think it's the fourth Monday at 7:00. And so I am looking for your approval of my appointments being Ash Bradley McCord as the chair of the committee.
Karen, could you very briefly, for Tony, just in a sentence or so, say what the public spaces...
Yes. Thank you. The Public Spaces Committee, we...if I were really good, I'd pull up the resolution. But it is to focus on the public spaces in the village. And to, they're charged with recommending opportunities for the village to use our public space. So one of the focuses of this committee will be the Abraham's Park, the Richard M. Abraham Memorial Park. This committee in the past has been doing a lot with pollinators, and we talked about maybe recommending an amendment to the code that would encourage the village or require the village to plant native plants, perhaps 75%. Looking at other communities that have done that and that sort of going in that direction. And then the other is Red Hook Village has had a variety of art displays over the last many years. And this committee is also charged with looking at ways that we can be ready for the potential for some temporary art displays either throughout the village or in public space. So that's, does anybody have a memory that's...
No. I'd agree.
So Ash Bradley McCord, I asked everyone for a little, you know, a little background. So Ash has been a resident of the village for five years. He moved up from Georgia. He grew up in rural Georgia in a small town that had hay fields and cattle farms. Grew up with large vegetable gardens. He loves growing his vegetables from seed with his little one in their backyard. Always had a love for nature and had joined the Public Spaces Committee in 2021 because I was interested in pollinators. I have enjoyed learning from the committee members as we've grown involved over the last three years. Betsy Brower is a village resident. She walks everywhere and is just an incredible, I think, addition to every group that she gets involved with.
She's the force behind community input for the Abraham's Park.
Yes.
To make that happen.
David Sokol, I actually don't have his words, but I know that he knows an awful lot about architectural, architecture and community space, and he is also a village resident. And then we have Linda DeGasper, who is a town resident. She is an environmental scientist, a master gardener, and is also on the Town Trails Committee. Hang on. And she's lived in the town of Red Hook for 10 years. She also volunteers on the Trails Committee, I think I just said that, and has a BS in environmental science with an emphasis in industrial hygiene. She's been employed by the Department of Veterans Affairs as an industrial hygienist for the last 30 years. So very interesting background. And then we have Barbara Westerman, who's also a town resident. And she is a...she practices community engagement through site-specific installations and prints. She is an installation artist and sculptor. I can bring ideas and initiatives to the table in advising the village board on enhancing and preserving public green space as well as researching and reviewing issues of land use with an emphasis on aesthetic beauty and sustainability. And she has a wonderful bio as well. And so those are the five people that I would like to appoint to this committee. Also, just to clarify, when we did our resolution, the terms were to be two years, but to get it on the right schedule, because we'd like to have these appointments happen in April with the reorganization meeting. So these appointments will be until April 5th, 2025, so not quite two years. And then the subsequent... Subsequent terms... Did I say, I said 25, didn't I?
Yeah.
That would be behind us. 2027. And so in the future, they'll be full two-year terms. Interestingly, for the Climate Smart Community, we hadn't staggered. This one we didn't, so we're not staggering. We might decide that's something we should do in the future, but that's not what we did for this committee. So that is my recommended appointment. I will say that this group has met, we've met a couple times over the last couple of months, and I think we've had a lot of conversation about the sort of reformation of this committee. And I think everyone is on board and looking forward to working towards creating recommendations that will be longer term and sort of leaving a longer legacy and really focusing on public spaces.
And we can improve them, would you agree?
Yes, 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 we can. Though, we have a wonderful sunflower, if you haven't noticed.
Yes, it's very true. Monday evening, the fourth Monday, does that conflict with our workshop?
It's not the fourth. It's either the first or third.
Okay, great. I just wanted to...
I think it's the third.
Okay, just want to make sure that you put a ten.
I think the fourth, the fourth one is a Thursday for Climate Smart. And I'm conflating two things because there's an overlap there in terms of... Enhancing our public space is also good for Climate Smart. Of course.
I was hogging him.
Important details. So with that, I'll take a motion to approve this resolution of these committee members.
So moved.
Thank you. Amy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. And this is a resolution, and it will be number 32. Super, okay. The next item is...
Are we need to have a moment? All in favor?
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just before we leave that, actually, I just had a question about the meeting dates. And since we were discussing the changes, is there a way that I can see our current calendar of meetings?
It's on the website.
It is on the website, and I know that we just changed it on the website. So I'm going to see it very quickly.
If you go to the, there's a link to the calendar.
Yes, it's the Village calendar. It's also the Village calendar, so...
If you go down, if you scroll down to the list, then you can see without having to click.
Oh, sure, that makes sense. Yeah, so it's September 15th, which is the third. So it would be the third, it'd be the third Monday of the month. At 7:00 PM.
Here?
Here. Yes, Village Hall. And so we'll either meet down here or in conference room. All good?
So we redo all in favor?
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it. You got them all. If you ever need me to do a roll call, just let me know. Property tax receipts for the month of July. Property taxes due, $1,444,135.28. Property taxes total parcels, 758. Property taxes received, $1,366,336.98. Penalties financed charges received, $1,374.25. Tote received, $1,367,711.23. Accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of 8/1/2025, Number of parcels outstanding, 37. And that is submitted by our tax receiver, who is Jen Cavanagh. I believe I just needed to read that report. So the next item on the agenda is a portion of the WIA project. So a little bit of background. Two years ago, we approved, it's effectively Phase 2A of a broader water project that is where we have a grant from... WIA stands for Water Infrastructure Investment Act. And within this phase of the project, we originally had four projects, but the cost of the first three was such that it took up all the funding. So we had three projects. One of them was a SCADA upgrade. SCADA is the computer system that runs our water plant. It's really just upgrading the software and the systems that go with it. Second project was rehabilitating the water tower. The water tower was repainted on the inside. And then there were a few fixes while we were up there, including a pipe that is effectively a downspout so that if the water gets too high, it goes down through this pipe rather than just over the edge of all edges, which it has done in the past. And then the third, the third project was replacing the water mains on Cherry and Grave Street, which Tony probably experienced himself. I gave you an update on those numbers. The original project was 1.8 million. The village approved an increase to those numbers. And what we need to do today is review and approve a final change order for AMIDI controls. And this is the SCADA project. The original deduct change order for $26,622, we had already approved. There's an additional final deduct of $6,730.96. So that takes the original contract of $416,700 down to $383,347.04. So this is, it's always nice when you're going and you have to pay less for your contract. But this is the final because the project is complete. So I do need a motion to approve this change order. Change order number two, of course you may.
Do we get to, since it's WIA funded, do we get to put that $67,000 towards...
So we have funded 60% of the cost of the project. So what it turns into is we will be financing slightly less. And we are currently in short-term financing with EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation of the state of New York. And we will be going from short-term to long-term. I believe the latest is sometime, hopefully in early 2026. We don't have a date on that yet. But that's, but yeah, unfortunately, it's not...
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
It's not extra funding. So I would take a motion to approve the change order, change order number two, and authorize me to sign the change order. Thank you, Mel Corca. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. Any further questions? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This will, with this approval for this change order, which then gets submitted to the state, then we can submit for the final payment for AMIDI, not AMIDI, Avanti controls. And that will then be the final, well, the final for the contracted part. And then when we go to final financing is when the remaining invoices will come in for the bond counsel and the financial advisor. Which is why those are still there. Okay, so that was that one. All right, moving on. Next, we have...
We're going to flip it.
We are going to flip it. We're going to start with the hard scrabble event approval. Just to clarify, we are in the process of putting into place an event permit process. It has not been made law yet, but we are getting closer. Tony's going to help me with that. But within the meantime, we are trying to follow the process so that we can, so that we're ready to go when the law is in place.
We've been sort of, this is, this application is essentially a draft application. We've been rogue testing it for the past year and have fine-tuned it as we have gone through different types of ads. So people probably know what Hard Scrabble Day is. This application is in fact from a 501(c)(3) that will be primarily devoted to doing, running, organizing Hard Scrabble Day.
Producing.
Producing, yeah. And this has been a long-term goal of Elise, Mel Corca, and I from Land and Karen, first from when Karen asked us to do up Hard Scrabble Day in 2021. It will put the village on more secure footing if we are not the one. If we are not the ones, in fact, who run or produce hardscrabble. Hardscrabble is, like all village-wide large events, is expensive and requires sponsorships to support it. And that is not a municipal role. So, I did talk about this back when I met with Jeff Walsh. It was at a workshop. So this is basically just approving what we had discussed before, so now you have the paper in front of you. Any public event that the Village of Red Hook is in any way, I'm gonna use the- If any public resources are being used by a public event, then by New York State Municipal Codes, and there's not one handy code, but there are a variety of ones that talk about public good, or it must have a purpose of public good. So that is why the purpose of the event, those are the options there. It may seem odd, but the reason they are there is because those are what the state deems public good purposes. It's a concert at a festival on the municipal lot. They have their estimations for their staff and volunteers, location. There will be food trucks, there will not be food vendors. That was a, sorry. So a food vendor is someone who prepares food off-site and sells it packaged. Unless they're doing that in the beer tent.
Is it the other way around?
Nope, food truck is preparing it on-site, food vendor.
No, I meant, I meant in terms of what they're planning to have.
No, not, well, okay, not as of the meeting that I was at, so if that's changed, I-
There'll be food in some form.
Yes. Anyway, there will not be for-profit vendors. The third-party table-aid exhibitors will be nonprofits. They will, as in the past several years, have the cider tent, be selling local beer and cider. There'll be porta-potties.
Starting at five PM.
The, oh, the alcohol, I was like, the porta-potties are not starting at five PM? That would be a problem. Yes, that's right. So you'll see, if you're looking at it, it says, please review the requirements for alcohol. One of them is that it must be in the ported area, and it cannot begin before five PM. And that there are wristbands or, and/or a bouncer to check people's application. There is no fundraising, it looks, if it looks like I crossed that out and did note that's correct, it's because this means onsite fundraising, which they will not be giving.
They are obviously asking for sponsorships.
Correct, but that's not considered fundraising happens. The only street that's closed is Prince between Broadway and the back entrance to the KeyBank lot, so that that is still accessible for KeyBank customers. There's no parade and it is a concert, so there will be amplified sound. The fee schedule is also a draft, so these are, and there were, he was incorrect, they do in fact need the village tent, that's what's over the cider, so that's why I put that in. And there's, they're using both of the electric cookups. And I also added the ADA bathroom signs to the signs.
Right, and this, this, this fee schedule, I think is something that we'll just add to the reorganization list in April.
So they're updated.
Should be updating our, our fee schedules.
I believe these numbers are from, when, Mel Corca, when did you draft this originally, like, two years ago?
Probably two years ago.
Yeah. Similarly, the fees per hour for DPW and police, those are not accurate dollar amounts, but the contracted minimums are accurate. So one of the reasons that we are doing this fee schedule, which will come up when we talk about procedures, is that we have a limited amount of budgeted funds in our celebrations line, is that what it's, I think that's what it's called.
I believe celebrations.
Yes, and so we want to make sure that we are apportioning it over, you know, as many events as we can with awareness that there are some established events, so. And then here you get a sense of other things. They will be required to give us a vendor contact list, but not until, that's for food vending, a week out. And that is because if someone should enjoy themselves immensely and then vomit later, they will call the village before they will be able to remember exactly who the food truck is, so we need to be able to connect that. And there is an insurance certificate requirement. So, we are essentially voting as to whether or not hardscrabble will happen on Saturday, September twentieth.
And obviously, we've been talking about this for many months, but we wanted to make it formal. So I'll take a motion to authorize me, well-
Unless there's any questions.
Yes, correct, that's right, doing questions first. Any questions?
Just with the Pride, people went for, right, sorry.
Yep.
Yes, Pride and Apple Blossom as well, we just haven't, so eventually, everyone will be required to have a vote at this. We haven't passed the law yet. So what we're doing now is, after road testing this for a year plus with just using it with the event organizers, we're now taking it to the next road test level of board.
This has happened before.
Yes, many years.
Hardscrabble? Yes, since nineteen-seventy-six?
Yeah.
Nine hundred years.
Is there band, are there bands?
Yes, there are.
Do we know, do we, do we know any of them that can be announced?
I don't think we're-
No, we don't.
I, look at, yeah, I don't think that they're being announced just yet because the line has been finalized.
Gotcha.
Sure, yeah, if you want to spread that from.
But yes, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful event that has, has changed the shape and dynamic. And there was one year during the pandemic when it was virtual.
It was a reverse parade, a tornado.
And then, and then I became mayor in May of twenty-twenty-one. And the committee that had been doing it for at least ten years, they were exhausted, it's a lot of work. And so I am deeply grateful to Amy and Mel Corca, who stepped up, and Jeff. And put together, and that's when we said, we really want to focus this locally, on our community, with regional bands and regional food. And so that's, these guys have done, and there used to be kids in the morning parade, bands, stuff everywhere. It was, it was, the first year was crazy. And it was ninety-five degrees, as I recall.
And it was still-
But it's a really wonderful event and it's a nice way to bring people together.
Do the high schools get involved in this?
No, they don't, primarily because I, having been the community outreach person as the events chair, it is early in the school year for them. So every year, when I reached out, they would say, it's too early. So, individual, I must say, individual high school students' bands perform in the afternoon, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, that's what you, okay, yes, high school students perform.
Our afternoon is, our afternoon is high school students.
Amazingly talented. But yeah, the morning is entertainment appropriate for kiddos. Afternoon is teen bands. And then the evening is, the headliners are in the evening. I will also-
And it's not specifically, the teen bands are not specifically associated with the high school. They're primarily associated with the community music space, is one of the, one of the organizers. So it's sort of a band that is together, separate and different from the high school, that's, that was confusion.
I will also just say that I am extraordinarily grateful that Jeff is willing to take this on. Mel Corca and I have many talents, but hiring and finding bands is not among them for either of us, I don't think that. Jeff, however, has that skill, has that experience, and actually loves it. So we are very lucky, there would not have been the amazing music we've had the last couple of years without him, so.
Very true. Any other questions?
I just, yeah, I just had a question about, is this, so like with Backhook, is this, have we had this, is this a first permit application that we've had from?
Well, from this nonprofit, yes. But the people who are part of this nonprofit have been part of, of the organizing of hardscrabble for the last four years, if that's your question.
So Backhook Pride has done this application twice before. The Rotary has done it twice for Apple Blossom, because, because we were, you don't know what you've forgotten until you try it. So we basically wanted to use it on a, you know, a more, of a, make sure we had a parade, a carnival, a run walk, the, the Tour de Red Hook, they had to do it as well. The Toucha Truck had to do one as well. So this is just, we are getting so much closer to the law that we decided to, you know, share the, the application as it currently stands. But it is still, you know, open to some, for example, I crossed out Block Party. And that is because there will be a, we're gonna take Block Party out of this longer thing and make it a one-page, similar to the, if all you need is an amp, it's sound amplification permit, it is a one-page thing. So.
Does that answer your question?
Ah, it does, but it brings on another-
Absolutely.
Hi, go ahead, Fran.
Yeah, so my, my question then is sort of how, so I know Backhook, we have, you know, their information and organization. How, how did we, I mean, you've mentioned Jeff. How did we hook up with this organization, or rather, how?
So, we've, we've basically, because for the last several years, and as we look at other communities, and the, the fact that by, by village law, the, the village is not allowed to be soliciting funds. And the way this works is by having sponsors, so there's kind of a gray area in that mix. So we've been actually looking for an opportunity to reorganize the structure of how this happens. So it's been in the works for the last couple of years to ask some key people who've been involved from the beginning to, to start a nonprofit so that the separate nonprofit can do, can do the work. They would be thrilled to have more people involved. I know they have four board members at the moment. But again, because it's in the very beginning stages, it's, it's sort of, they've got their bylaws and they've, they've got their, you know, they are, they have their nonprofit number. But it's in the, in the process.
Right. So then my, my question is then going forward, so if we're using this as, you know, road test, still piloting and refining our process for events, do we have a type, so if, you know, if we pass this and this goes forward, and as far as the next hardscrabble, do we think at that point we have a more formal system in place for events? I just, you know, I, because it's hardscrabble, unlike Backhook or unlike, unlike the Tour de Red Hook, this is hardscrabble, you know, it's, and I, I believe from previous meetings, I understand that this is not village funds. This is, do, does the event core or corporation have access to previous, previous sponsorships and?
So there's, there's a handful of funds, and Mary Beth will, will share what's, what's in the, the hardscrabble account. All the money in the hardscrabble account came from sponsorships. So there's no tax funding, there's no, there's no public funds that are in that account. And actually, the town, for example, has supported hardscrabble in the past. And what, the way they do it is there's a, there's an invoice for some, some portion, I think it's usually related to the tent, that the town will, they will, they will pay that invoice. And so I see the village as supporting hardscrabble in a similar way. Or using the remaining hardscrabble funds that came from sponsorship, as I say. There's no budgeted money from the general fund that went into the hardscrabble account. And then at some point, it's, you know, it's the village's contribution becomes the, the support from the DPW and the police and any other support that we would choose as a board to, to-
Provide.
Which is the same as we provide for the Rotary's, Apple Blossom, Backhook's, Pride, et cetera.
Great.
The other thing is that that, that account, the, when, when we started, because the name on that account, which was established under the previous mayor, we thought that it was a 501(c)(3), at least Mel Corca and I did. And it was only by digging deep that we found out it was not. It was an intention to do it, but they never actually did it.
Yeah, didn't mention.
So this is actually following through on something that was actually kind of decade in the making, if not more.
That's great, that's great. Yeah, my only, I would have, I would have loved to have, yeah, I would have loved to meet Jeff Walsh in the context of, you know, this application myself, just, you know, as a, as a board member.
As in general, that's not going to happen for event applications, just-
I see.
Yeah, because in order to get to this point, they've had to do, we'll, we'll go through, yeah, we'll go through this list, but we use the exact same procedure that we've used for everyone else.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, did you have a question?
No.
No.
I got an answer.
Got it, okay. Did I have a, do I have a motion to?
I mean, I can, I can make a motion.
Okay, second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, next, next item is, as we move towards getting the law in place, the, the framework is that the law will be that we have an event permit process. The actual process and the application and the fees will be something that we review on a regular basis, I would say annually in general. But the idea is to not incorporate it into the law, so if we want to change it.
So there is what you have before you, you are internal procedure, and then, which would be for the use of the village. The actual application gives the external procedure, like what they need to do.
Right.
And it, it gives much of the same information, but, you know, slightly differently. But first, I want to just explain the process. There is something called an event, event interest form. I spoke about this at a July meeting when a group who wants to do a Day of the Dead event had contacted me solely because they need me as the events person, the chair before, to check. So basically, the event interest form is submitted to the village clerk in a variety of possible ways. And it is saying, hey, we, we kind of want to do this thing on this date, and here's a general description of it. This is literally like a half-page. And it basically allows the village clerk to look at the calendar and be like, well, there's no conflict here. And it allows the mayor and or the events liaison to look at the purpose of public good if it's an event that will draw on public resources. So public resources can be as simple as they want to use property that is owned by the village, all the way up to, there will be, you know, it's a complex footrace that requires a lot of overtime from the police department. So this basically outlines that, you know, if, if the date is available and there's no issue regarding public good, then the clerk replies and CCs the mayor and the events board liaison. And then that clerk's reply gives them the full permit application. If they didn't supply an email address, then the clerk will call. If the date is not available, the clerk replies to the applicant, CCs the mayor and events board liaison on the reply. Reply lets applicant know the date they have chosen is not available, suggests they consider another date. And then finally, the one that is trickier and usually involves a conversation is if the stated description of the proposed event does not meet the definitions of purpose of public good, and the event would require the village to contribute public resources, then the mayor and or events liaison contacts the applicant- then the mayor and/or events liaison contacts the applicant, sets up a meeting to discuss the village's limitations with regard to the event as proposed. So it leaves open the possibility, when you're in the interest form stage, there's lots of flexibility for going through it. So if there are no interest, there are no issues, then events liaison contacts the applicant for three reasons, would be to provide them with timeline, information, and offer assistance with the application as needed, and then to schedule an in-person meeting to review the application. And that meeting, when we define the events committee, which currently consists of me, and you.
Maybe.
Correct, sure. Again, we welcome volunteers. The events board liaison, the mayor, we meet in person with the applicant and review their application with them. And part of that is to more have clear definition on the parameters of the event. And event organizers may not be aware fully of what we use village resources the event may require. And so the cost of any of those resources is determined as well as the applicant's financial responsibility. We anticipate, I mean, the whole purpose of creating a permit process is to make it easier for people to have public events, to put all of the information for what you need to know for the ADA, for, you know, different, different public spaces and the limitations on them in one place. So we anticipate that there may be in the future, events, so many events and a limited budget for municipality that some events may have to pay for a portion of the resources they need. The mayor facilitates all questions related to operations, including requests of public works, RHPD, et cetera. When the application is complete, the mayor puts the events permit application on the agenda of the next regular meeting of the village board. We could have actually had this on the last regular meeting, but we hadn't fully, whatever. Within five days of the board meeting, one of the things that, the external things, the people are eventually going to be invited to that board meeting if they would like. I forgot about that. At any rate, the mayor lets them know in writing of the board's decision, and then the village clerk adds the approved events to the village's online calendar. Finally, a week prior to the event date, event organizers must meet in person with the mayor, events board liaison, and representatives of any needed village departments. This is an example of live and learn. We most recently added that after we had an event where there was a lot of, the contact person for the event was not actually the person the morning of, and they were, you know, people trying to set up, but nobody was here to check them in, kind of stuff. So now we got that one week out so that we can be sure that all the info is updated. Are there any questions on that stuff? We're not actually voting on this, are we?
Nope.
This is just a sort of, this is the state we're at.
And I think, yeah, and I, and I will add, this may feel like a lot of detail, but what we found is that if we don't specify the detail, it makes it that much harder for all the different people who need to be a part of it, particularly the clerk. If we're very specific, then it can flow much more easily.
As with, yeah, as with any law type, or any type of consideration for who is using public space and how, or public resources and how, part of the job, as we think about this, is to anticipate many possibilities and to make sure that the village has clear grounds on which to say, no, I am sorry, we cannot do a private party in the municipal lot, for example.
And the point of this is to encourage more events, right?
Yes, that's the whole thing.
More people to do events and know how to do it, and know who to ask, and know.
Yeah, one of the big whereas's in the event permit law is basically because the village wants more, to make it easier for people to have public events.
And also by having this, by having this in writing and sort of laid out, it's not, it's not based on one person who's used to doing it and knows how, it then becomes sort of embedded in the village.
Yeah, because one of the problems when the previous committee that used to do hardscrabble disappears, they, they didn't leave anything behind, so there was no information at all.
They did leave stuff behind.
It wasn't as helpful.
It wasn't, yeah, but they, they did leave minutes and all sorts of things.
Sure, okay. They didn't, they left stuff, but not the stuff that I did, anyway. So the other thing is an event permit timeline. These are ideal ranges. The one thing that is going to be hard eventually, because we are not informing people of this yet, for example, the tour de Red Hook was 30 days out, and, anyway, is the 90 days prior. And the reason for that is that most public events will be getting some form of village support, and we do not want to be budgeting scarce resources for an event that does not have adequate time to be public. This is particularly true. Yeah, publicized, sorry. This is particularly true of new events, because people have no idea to anticipate them, they don't have an internet presence, et cetera. So there are three different timelines here, and this is because a block party, which is defined as, Tony, Tony asked about hardscrabble not being a big block party. So a block party is defined as the residents of a block, a street corner, are throwing it themselves, for primarily for the people who live on that block or on adjacent. This is a publicly advertised event, so that's the, it's a difference in scale. And one of the key things is parking plan. Yeah.
Where did these timelines come from?
So I created them in consultation with other, in compared, you know, looking at other municipalities' backwards timelines, and then also looking at the road testing that we've done, what's effective and what's less effective. The goal, and the reason that I put the word ideally, is because there's going to be some growing pains as we all get used to using this process officially. But eventually, I feel that we want people to be fully aware of how much coordination of efforts it takes, so, yeah.
Will there be a point where we need to nail down these timelines?
Yeah, this one is going to, as far as I'm concerned, the minimum of 90 days prior to the event, they get the official go. That one, I think, does.
And, and I would argue that there could be, you could imagine, an event or something that would not, that the board could choose to waive the requirement of the 90 days.
Yes. The thing, the reason there's a range is, I'll give the Day of the Dead event as an example.
That was my next Buddhist Day of the Dead.
Oh, sorry. Day of the Dead is.
It's not Halloween, I assume.
No, it's, it's all, it's how All Souls Day, essentially, I mean, it predates that, but it's co-opted, is celebrated in, primarily in Mexico. And there is a, a group that has for the last two years, no.
Three years.
Three, because there was two at the farm and one up there, done a Day of the Dead party. And there are, there is, it's the Afrendis Project, so there are Day of the Dead offering spots where you can leave memories of people who have passed or something like that throughout the village at public institutions. The Village Hall has hosted one last three years, community center, the library, and the schools, all have a physical, all, all of the schools, every single school in the district has one. So the reason for the range, so the Day of the Dead event, they were considering, or they are considering, changing their location from last year. And so they put that in their interest form, and then I discussed it with them, the, like, the different considerations the different location would have, as far as insurance and public safety and stuff like that. So they are then taking some time to reconsider, you know, how they want to, where they want to put their resources, if not. So this is why, for some events, hardscrabble as an example, we don't, we know exactly what hardscrabble is. If they were changing it, there might be a longer, but the, the interval between interest form and application is, can be shorter for them. For another organization that might need to be like, you know, maybe that original location or that original date needs to change, they will maybe need more time.
My only concern would be, again, the ideally, that's pretty ambiguous, and, you know, if somebody doesn't meet that timeline, they could say, well, so what?
We can take that out, I mean.
Well, I would also say that this timeline is something that we're going to review each year. So it certainly can be something that we just take the word ideally out, and if someone isn't meeting it, we can acknowledge that and decide as a board if we want to allow it to happen.
We could do a star at the bottom that says, you know, the, the timelines may be waived in special circumstances.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, if, what we could do is say, you know, all of the above is subject to the board's, because here's, here's my concern. If we say that, specifically if we say the timeline can be waived by the board, we need to give criteria for in what scenarios we waive it and in what scenarios we don't.
Well, this won't be special circumstances, but yeah.
But then we need to define, I mean, if we're like really covering our, we need to define what they would be. I'm happy removing the ideally. This is, as it says at the top, just a draft, and I totally see the point. In the external one, I have it in terms of months, not days.
Sorry, in the external?
So the external is the information that goes to the applicant.
Okay.
Do we have, do I have to?
No, because that's part of the application, and I, we haven't.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah, you and I need to go through that one more time before.
So the purpose of going through this was, first of all, for everyone to take a look at it. If you have any thoughts, and thank you, Tony, for pointing out that ideally really doesn't get us very far. And, you know, if we're serious about the timeframe, then we should be serious about the timeframe, probably does mean we need to come up with criteria for when, when we would waive that. And, you know, and then I, I mean, the next step really is to have the, the law, and to have that reviewed, and public comment, and, and et cetera. So this is an opportunity to put it out there more specifically, as, as we've sort of gone down the path of how is this going to work.
And basically, this, as, since I'm events person, this is basically giving you guys the opportunity to like, look at this, think about it, and give, if you have ideas later, just share them directly with me. Please don't share them with the full board, we can't do full board emails, that's open meetings law. Well, information can be shared, but.
You can share information.
Yeah, but you'd be sharing an opinion.
No, absolutely not.
If you, if you give me a response to this and say, I would like to see this removed.
The biggest, the biggest issue is we can't have a debate, we can't have a discussion via email, that's all. It just can be a back and forth.
Right, okay, I, I, yes, if we're responding, then we're welcome to respond directly to you on.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm asking for, yeah.
Yes, that, yeah, we couldn't, well, I had a question, but since you mentioned the block party, and you said this would be a publicly advertised event, what does that mean?
No, only, he was asking for the differentiation between this event at the top and a block party. The one at the top is a publicly advertised, all, like, you know, you're advertising, I don't know what, wherever, in the newspaper, but it's, you know, et cetera. A block party is a local.
Sure.
It's publicly advertised in that you might have a sign up on your neighbors. Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, and you're, I mean, this sounds ridiculous, but you're not allowed to say, we're having a block party, but you can't come.
Yeah, it's like kids, when you have a, you know.
Right, so in that regard, it's public.
Like a whole class.
But, yeah.
My other question is just about access. How, if I were someone who were interested in hosting a block party or indeed having an event, where could I find access, one to the permit application or even?
But when it's available, it will all be on the website, as well as in the clerk's office, and we'll put about it in the newsletter and various other press release places.
I get it, but we are having events in the meantime while you're working.
Yes, because we've been doing so for the past two years, because we've been working it out. We don't have a law.
Specifically about hardscrabble, I'm speaking.
No, no, I don't, no.
So just to, just to clarify, what's, what has happened is when someone is interested in doing an event, usually they reach out and say, we'd like to do an event. And then we say, aha, let's send you an interest form. So I, but yes, the ultimate goal is to have it on the website. But the way it has been working is either someone will call, you know, one of us and say, gee, I'm thinking about this, or, or they'll call Jen and say, we want to do this, what do we need to do? So it, the easiest thing, if you know of someone who's contemplating, just have them call, have them call Village Hall.
The reason it's not on the website yet is because we have not in fact done a law.
Yeah.
So what we've been trying to be prepared for the law by, I'm, I'm not holding this up because it's hardscrabble, I'm holding it up because it's the application. That's why we've been trying to develop it in an informed way, so that when the law is there, we have everything people need.
I get it. My only question is about access and equity. So for instance, we have the Fisk Street block party, and if a neighbor on Thompson is like, well, you know, I, I just mean in terms of letting people know that while we're working through all of this, that there are actually avenues to, I, I get that we maybe don't want to encourage people to come, you know, and, you know, barrage or, you know, in, in, what is the word, when you were?
In a day.
In a day, thank you. In a day with requests and things, but I do feel that there should be some way for people to know that, you know, this is something, in the meantime, we're working on the case, we're getting a law in place, but, you know, it's, it doesn't seem fair to me that, you know.
So just, just to clarify, I was going to say, just to clarify how the Fisk Street happened, a resident, a resident of the area reached out to me and, and the clerk, and said, we'd like to do a block party, we'd like to block off the road, can we do that? And, and so we were able to make that work, and, and that's really how it happened.
That's great, that's great. I just, it was just a plug for, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
The website is coming, so that's.
Yeah, there's never an intention of not sharing it, it's just, we haven't officially because it's not officially required.
Of course, I understand that, it was just, you know, I'm just putting myself in the shoes of someone who's just moved here, or maybe has been here a long time and doesn't know how to engage the village in these ways, so that's.
I mean, that's the whole point, so it's, it's a good, it's a good attitude to have, it's the whole point of having applications, because maybe you want it to just be existing people that know the mayor, can throw an event, that's not what it's supposed to be, so you have the right activity.
Or like only people who've done it before because they know all the rules.
Right, that's the point, it's super like, it's so, it's like everything that could possibly go wrong, or that someone would like misunderstand, or forget to ask about, or not consider, it's like all in there, it's, it's a lot to think about, and people get overwhelmed, they sit down, but they're always grateful after they sit down. I don't usually sit down in a meeting, say, nice, but then they come away and, yeah.
So they feel that they've, yeah, that they're supported as well.
Yes, they know.
And I guess I would just reiterate, in the meantime, we can all communicate with anyone we know, in some way, if you hear someone saying, gee, it'd be fun to have a block party, just tell them, tell them, you know, shoot an email into Jen, or the village, or to me, or whatever, or to you, and you can sort of pass it on. Because frankly, we'd love to have block parties. We actually would love to have them all over the village. Obviously not at the same time, and there's certain roads that just you can't shut down, but that's, you know, that's why it comes a process, so.
I feel obligated because I ran on block parties.
Well, there you go, perfect, well, feel free to.
Yeah, freely, we're allowed to close that one. We're allowed to close our street because there are alternative routes all the way around it, so.
Okay, well, wonderful, thank you. It is, it is, while it's taken us a while to get here, it's, you know, it's a lot of effort that's gone into it.
It's the effort, very deeply.
And I look forward to getting it, I know, sort of officially in and humming. Next item is a letter of support for rebuilding together grant application. I realized that I did not print it out. I realized that I did not print it out, I did email it to you. It is, it is simply, so for those who don't know, rebuilding together is an organization, it's rebuilding together Hudson Valley. And if you qualify, it's an income, income qualified service, they will come and make fixes in your home so that you can stay. And actually Redhook, in the village of Redhook, was one of the projects last year. And it was such an incredible project, I went by, it was pouring rain, they had some tents up.
Is that the Redhook streets?
Yep. And there was a large number of volunteers and I spoke with the owner and she said, well, my daughter said I should do this and I didn't think I needed. I mean, it was fixing stairs out the back, it was, you know, a railing, it was, I think they did the roof. They reoriented drainage because there was water going into the basement. I mean, it really was an extraordinary, extraordinary thing. And, and so this literally is just the village saying that we support rebuilding together in their application for funding to continue to do this work. And so I just wanted to do it on behalf of the whole board. And so I wanted to ask you all for your, we can turn down the air conditioning if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I digress. Shall we turn it down?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Village Board takes intent, I like that. It wasn't meant to be. Thank you.
So I will.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to authorize me to send a letter of support for rebuilding together on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
A second.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, aye. Okay, next item is the police town contract. You have, I emailed you a copy, you all have a copy in front of you. The guts of the contract are the same. The key item, what we added to this contract was just to acknowledge that we have a collective bargaining agreement and that they are also subject to the rules of the collective bargaining agreement, which includes a four hour minimum for a police officer. And that's particularly applicable when often a court officer, the court very rarely goes four hours. But we have a collective bargaining agreement and we are required to pay four hours. And so thus, if the town is interested in Redhook Village Police Officers for, to be a court officer, they also have to abide by the collective bargaining agreement. They have increased their, the amount is a hundred and five thousand. It's actually originally a hundred thousand. And right now for this contract, we are doing a combined price of sixty-five dollars. So the hundred and five thousand is for the patrolling that is done. And the amount of patrols that are given are calibrated based on the total quantity of dollars that we are getting from the town. And then, because for example, things happen in the town and the Redhook Police Department responds. So it's not all based on fixed scheduled patrols. And then it's the court officer or a special event where they want to engage the village police department. That will be at sixty-five dollars an hour. And if most of the time, a court officer is on overtime, and so that overtime is eighty-five dollars an hour for this contract. I did do a combined look at rates and this is about right. So what it means is we need to make sure that all of our police officer time is not our lieutenant and sergeant, that we have a balance of those, those who do that. And next year, so very shortly, I'm gonna be proposing next year's contract for the town. I'm gonna propose that we do the tiered, the tiered, what's the word I'm looking for, dollars, so that, for example, if the lieutenant is the one who is the court officer, here's the, here's the hourly price. And if it's the sergeant, it's this. If it's a full-time officer, it's this. If it's a part-time officer, it's this. That is what we've done with the other contracts that we have for the extras that we do, and that's what I'd like to do next year. Given that we are past halfway through this year, it didn't seem to make sense to sort of redo that at this point. So I am comfortable with this contract for this year. And because it is not what we originally, what I had originally proposed, I'm presenting it to you and asking for a motion to authorize me to sign the contract.
So moved.
I have two questions.
Absolutely.
The first one is events such as when they, when the town requests village PD presence at public hearings or at their board members, those are also similar to like you were saying, a court officer, but that would also.
That would be a special event, yep.
Okay, just checking. And then I have some concern about the automatic renewal for one year. I know the hourly rates could change, but just, this alludes to the later thing about the boat club purchase. If, I, I think that that's going to require a different amount of patrols and/or police presence. And I just don't know if, if it annually renews the same at a hundred and five. I'm just wondering.
So it can be terminated in accordance with section seven, which is thirty days written notice with or without cost. So I think that gives us the out. We can, I, I was gonna have our, our new village attorney look at it and see if there was anything that he would recommend that we change for next year. But we have a, we have a, we have a pretty short out with a thirty day notice.
Yep, I just wanted to, I mean, I saw that, I just wanted to sort of say.
But no, I think that's a, I think that's a very, yep, I think that's a very fair, a very fair, and, yeah, a very fair thing for us to review. That's been in there for a number of many years. But I think that's an interesting thought. That perhaps we re, instead of having it automatically renew, there needs to be indication from the town, a certain, you know, maybe ninety days before the end of the year, that they'd like to continue or whatever. But yeah, we can, if you're okay with looking at it for the, for next year's contract, given that we have an out within thirty days.
Ah, okay.
The whole thing is gonna take longer than, the boat club piece is gonna take longer than that.
Oh, I know, I know. I'm just, I just wanted to say, yep.
And I appreciate it because that also, I also have a question about that. So given that we have this short out and we are far away from whatever, because we are going to be discussing, or addressing the town, one of our main questions was knowing how this would affect the village police department. But can we not just, since we have the agreement, can we not just wait until they, like, the town, I don't, I can't say that the town can even speak to what their waterfront need and waterfront park needs would be?
Well, from my, from my perspective, it would require an amendment to the contract if we are going to include. The other piece that we really haven't addressed is the trails. So we've got the Cookingham Trails that are, you know, that's new. And so I think all these things are things that the lieutenant and I, we will be sitting down and within the next month to review all of our contracts. And I think that's, that's part of it is to perhaps, and again, if something happens on the Cookingham Trails, the police officers are going to go there and, and, and address the need. It's, it's, it's a safety, you know, safety and security question. But I do think that the boat club, should that come to fruition, that's a very different type of policing activity. You know, the road there, the, if somebody's in the water, that, we don't have the capacity for that. So I think it leads to a whole nother conversation. And I think that's not covered in this contract.
Certainly, no, certainly. Yeah, we, we don't know what the town is proposing, so.
Correct, yep. Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
How are the hours measured?
The hours are measured, our payroll system is, incorporates hours. And generally someone is assigned a, a particular task or a patrol. So for example, someone will come in and their, their.
Their shift.
Shift, thank you, is, is one thing. So, and the shift will either be eight hours or four hours. And so that shift will be.
Town patrol.
Will be put into the bucket of, it is identified as either town, village, court, school, special event, tibbally. So we have all those identified and the hours are separated that way.
And the police department factors them out and gives them to the treasurer, is that right?
No. Actually, I go through their time cards and make sure that it's done.
Yeah, I know.
Done, done correctly. But it's also, there's, there's kind of a balance of, because there are spontaneous calls, if you will, something happens, which might happen in the middle of a, of a village patrol. If, if that is then addressed, there's often paperwork that goes with that, those hours are.
That was actually my question.
Yeah, the, the, those hours are attributed to the town. And so under the hundred and five thousand, the more there are events that are happening outside of the scheduled patrol, the less the patrols are going to be.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other questions? Did I have a mo, I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't have a motion in a second?
Aye.
I will ask for all in favor.
Aye.
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 Terrific, thank you. The town has a meeting tomorrow and they will, they will in theory approve this tomorrow and we'll be off to the races. Water service agreement. So little context on this one. Within the village, the village is our water district. And so we effectively have a contract with all of our water customers within the village. Within the town, there's actually no formal water district. So we do not have an intermunicipal agreement with the town to provide service to a water district. This is getting into the weeds of water law that, that I will shortly start drowning. But what we have started doing is any person in the town who wants to have water service from the village, we have established a template contract, which is what you have here, that we have specified for Thirty-two Hewitt. What's interesting about Thirty-two Hewitt is they've had a, they've had a, what is it called? It's, it's not water service to a building, but it's a faucet.
Like a pump.
Yeah, it's like a, there's a word for it, yard, yard, yard hydrant, there you go. Knew it'd come down with it eventually. And they are going to be building a house and so they're gonna use the same water. So they've actually had a water connection. They're just going to adjust it and then run it into the house. And, but, that's a little background on that one. But this is the, the contract that we did for, the other one that we did was on Blue Echo. And so this is the same contract, that was the whole point, was that we had a template that we would then use for any other request for water or any changes to request for water. And the benefit to this is, is it really is, it becomes a formal contract with, with the homeowner and ultimately the property. And this also means that we have something to stand on if there becomes a dispute or someone stops paying their water bill. So I will ask for, anybody have any questions about the water agreement? Yeah.
So are, do we have a plan on expansion of how many people we're gonna be giving water beyond our bounds? Is it, we're just saying, yes, to everybody that asks, are there other customers around them that are already being served? How does that, I mean, I know we are already giving them the hydrant.
So we are required to do one, one by one. So if someone asks for water service in the town, we do this. We have, we have this discussion, we say, do we wanna give them water? There, the town has begun discussions of creating a water district. The benefit also to a what, so the other is, we can't borrow money to do capital projects outside of, outside of the village. So that is also the other benefit to the towns, to create water districts. So that should they need to or want to do a capital project, they have the means to do that.
So does, does that mean that then we are only able to give these types of agreements to properties where the infrastructure already exists?
No.
Because, but we can't build it? But they could build it?
So we're, we're in a, what I would refer to as a little bit of a gray area in that, so for example, Mighty Donuts. Mighty Donuts is on Village Water. We have a contract with them that we created. They had to, so there's a water main that goes down Old Farm Road, Old Farm Road. And so they got themselves an easement from the Ross property. And so there is a water pit right there at the road, just next to the sidewalk. And then from there, it, they did, they did the rest of the work. And that's their service line. So the villages, the village owns to the meter.
That already existed, I mean, it existed there.
In that case, they, we own to the meter because it's in a meter pit outside. Normally, we own to the curb, the curb key, or the, the curb stop. And then on the other side of that, to the house, that's the homeowner's service line. But that's, so, did we tap the main and, and, and connect to the meter pit? Yes, we did, but the rest of it is all on the owner. If that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. So I will ask for a motion to authorize me to sign this water service. Actually, before I do that, how do you all, again, because there's an existing, the yard hydrant, and this also allows us to direct them to create, I believe we've asked them to create a meter pit very close to the road, which the, the good part about that is we're metering it for whatever length of service line they have. So it kind of tidies up what was there. And because the, you know, it's not even a tap, I mean, it's, it's right, it's already there. So this one feels like a very easy one to do. Blue Echo was an interesting one because it was a vacant lot. And we provide water basically to the whole area of Blue Echo, so it seemed like a, well, this is just one more in that area. If it's, you know, I would expect that if it's, so down in the TND district, South, on South Broadway, I would say another one-off sort of down the road, I'd probably not recommend we do that. We do, the, the water main was connected from Tradition across the road of Route, down Old Farm across Route nine to connect to what was an end of the road, fire hydrant was there. And that work was paid for by Baywright, Ross and Kirchhoff. And so they all have a contract with the village for water, because that's why they did it. It's much better for our water system because it now creates a loop. So those areas right there already have a contract with us. Beyond that, it really doesn't make a lot of sense for us to start doing one-offs. So that's where the district really needs to come into place. And then you can plan the water lines, the mains, in a logical way. You really ought to have one main with everybody tapping off and we can't do that right now.
And capacity wise, we're in good shape as for now.
As for now, we're in good shape. We are, we are having discussions. I will say, the former deputy mayor, Brink Valcheck, every other, no, probably every water meeting, talked about having an additional well for two reasons. One, to add to the capacity, but also to add to the diversity of where we're getting our water. All of our wells are over, off Firehouse Lane. They did a test well over at Abraham's Park, that was, that was a very good test well. And so that is at the moment, the logical place for us to put another well. And so that's in the mix, a little longer term, but it is, it is an easy spot for us to connect to our current system in another location.
Thank you for going for that.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions?
How many of these do we have?
How many contracts do we have or how many town customers do we have? Two different things.
How many agreements with private owners or supply owners?
So we have Tradition, we have Mighty Donuts, we have Ross, we have Baywright down there. We have Blue Echo, we have this one. The formal agreements like that, that looks like six. We have a lot more town customers. There were developments that were done and there was an agreement that was made before, before, you know, back in the seventies or whatever. So the village just extended there. I don't know how it all worked, but we supply water to a variety of spots just outside the village.
Okay.
Any other questions? With that, I had a motion in a, do I have a motion in a second? No, I need a motion to authorize me to sign this water service agreement for 32 Hewitt.
Not a motion instead of a second?
So any motions? Do I have a second? Fran? We'll go with Fran?
A double second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The last one to regular business that I have is we had discussed previously sending a letter to the town regarding their decision, or at the time, it was a pending decision to use eminent domain to purchase the Red Hook Boat Club. I just want to add a little context. I have felt, I felt for, early on, that it wasn't really our role to comment as it was a town business. But as it has proceeded, one of the things that, you know, we've talked a lot about hardscrabble, one of the things that we talked about a lot was coming out of the pandemic, bringing the community together and having everyone feel like they're part of the community. It's the Language Access Grant that's been, you know, part of that is to make sure that all the various different people, the people who, 12 generations here, people who came yesterday, they're all different types of people here. And we've tried really hard, I think, to give a sense of broader community. And particularly in an environment where there's a lot of polarization that I think on a local basis, because we see each other, we're with each other in the grocery store, walking down the street, that we started to create a fabric, and not started, I mean, this is a wonderful community that has been a community for a long time. And what I have seen is that this action towards eminent domain for purchasing the Red Hook Boat Club has been ripping that fabric apart. And that's when I felt it became important for us to have the discussion of should we, should we make a statement, should we send a letter to the town board with a perspective? So that's where I come from on why I feel that this letter is relevant and important for the village to consider. And I know Amy had circulated this letter. I know Tony, you weren't on the board when we first had this discussion. Fran, I think you were away. And so this is an opportunity for all of us to take a look at it and to revisit the idea. You know, it's the idea and then it's the specific.
So when I drafted the letter, the decision hadn't been made yet. And then I drafted the letter and the decision was made that same later that day. So Karen had asked me to make a letter reflect the three major themes that we had talked about at that particular meeting. And so that's where it is. The first point addresses the division. The second is concerns about a lack of disclosure of financial plans for maintenance and operations. And what implications that might also have for shared emergency services and the town's contract with the village police department. I did a little bit of research and the sheriff's department doesn't have a dedicated water rescue unit. Though they do have officers trained in water rescue. It's not a particular unit. It's not like a SWAT that rolls out for it. Ulster County has one of those. So there is equipment and so on and so forth there. And it would also potentially affect our insurance or the police department insurance. And then finally was the notion that any one particular long-range planning document could be considered a mandate. That part of our job is to apply plans that may have been drawn up decades or years before us, or that we may have participated in drawing up in ways that are responsive to the community and transparent in terms of the financial burdens that it may have on the constituents. So that is sort of the, the symbol is there.
How we got here.
Yeah, if anybody.
I would just say that I think we're in a unique position because we are not on the town board, but yet we are town constituents. So, and our constituents are also town constituents that will be affected. So it's this conflicting thing of you don't want to criticize another board, but also it affects us and it affects our constituents, this choice.
Yeah, my question is while I was away, Karen has just answered because my questions were how we came to have this discussion. In that, what was the impetus for deciding we wanted to, you know, speak as a board? I personally, I don't know what we would be trying, and maybe we can clarify based on previous conversation. What would we be trying to get from this letter?
I'm not, I mean, I think the optimistic scenario would be to have the town board reconsider. I don't expect that to happen. I think it's more to put on the record that we've discussed this. And that, again, from my perspective, I see a tearing of the fabric of the community. And I think that's, I think that's not a good thing. And so I think it's a combination of sharing our concern and obviously the financial question, what is the financial impact of this? And I think it's considerable, but we don't know. But I think right now, I'm more worried about the community fabric, if you will, to not come up with a better phrase. And I think it's important, I see it as something that's an opportunity for us to voice that as elected officials in our capacity here in the village.
Yeah, I agree. But to Mel Corca's point as well, I agree that, you know, it's a delicate thing we're working with. And since we're talking about, this is a decision that has gone through. The town voted 3-2 to pursue this course of action. I don't know that our, you know, sending a letter does not actually itself contribute to division and rank in terms of, I mean, personally, I would like, if the residents knew that there is, actually, we're two different municipalities and we have our own smoke that we take for things that we do and the town has their own. But we are, as you know, as we all know, we are of a one. But I guess I don't see the point of what this, we had previously discussed the contract, the agreement that we have with the town as far as policing. And I felt I was gratified to have further clarification on that agreement and what, how the agreement could change, be modified, be terminated if needed in the event of additional services and things needed by the town. So, yeah, I suppose I don't see why.
So when it was initially written, it wasn't too, we were asking them to take a pause and a step back from their procedure. The reason that I think, I think there's some pragmatic elements in addition to the optimistic one Karen has. There has not actually been public discussion of what the impact would be on the RHPD. That hasn't entered into any of the, that I've attended the public hearing, like, you know, many of you, or Red.
Sorry, can you tell me what that acronym you just used?
Oh, sorry, the Red Hook Police Department.
Okay, yeah. I read PD, but I, yeah.
Yeah. That's fine. And so I think that that is actually something that we would be adding to the narrative because there would be an impact on the officers, potentially on our liability insurance, et cetera. And so I think that's important to state. I also think that, you know, when I went door to door for the income survey, once the, I went out once before any of the boat clubs had started and then a couple of times afterwards. People were asking me what the village was going to do with eminent domain and had various suggestions. So to me, one of the most important things is the third part, where, you know, we have to apply the plans in ways responsive to what the community wants. And in that way, we have something in common with another board. And that is a shared responsibility to be responsive. And I think that it's important to publicly state that to them, that we see that as one of our responsibilities.
And this is one of our responsibilities as elected officials of our municipality? Or we are also?
Elected officials, in my opinion, of any municipality. It's how we, long-range planning documents are subject to interpretation.
And those long-range planning documents for the village. So that any, you know, plan that we have, we also have the responsibility to be responsive to the community. You know, we might today say we'd like to do this in the long term. And then down the road, we might need to do another check to make sure that that's where the community would like to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only question then would just be, again, back to the intent of the letter. Are we, is this a letter just stating our opinions? Or are we attempting to get answers back from the town?
Are we attempting to get what?
Answers back?
No. I mean, I don't anticipate we're going to get an answer.
I don't anticipate we get an answer, but we've certainly laid out some questions that we could get answers to.
An earlier version did, I don't like to write letters that are only criticizing. I also like to write letters with suggestions or perspectives. But a lot of those got eliminated simply because next steps had been taken.
The other is, it is my understanding that the board voted to proceed. But I believe they needed to enact the final element by sometime in August.
Yes, that's true.
So it's not done dumb. I mean, there was one more thing.
No money has changed hands. I mean, they haven't set it up for the payment to be made, so.
And I think sometimes.
It's not completely too late, basically.
I do think that sometimes, even if a goal of getting answers or a goal of saying, have you thought of this or we're concerned about that, that the reality is we probably won't get an answer. And the reality is we probably won't change anything. But I do think there are times when speaking up and voicing that concern and asking those questions are still important. And that's, as I say, I, you know, I was actually asked to do something of this nature months ago. And I didn't feel this appropriate. But I think as it's gone on, as the, as the community input continues and as it, it just feels like it's going in a direction that is, you know, we've talked about transparency, we've talked about communication, we've talked about trying to engage our residents in what we're doing. And it feels like that the town is doing the opposite. And I think, again, it goes back to, from my standpoint, I think this is something that has gotten to a level where I think it is, I think it would be appropriate for us to say something. Now, I can also say something as mayor that doesn't have to come from the board. But part of what we talked about at the workshop was, do we want this to come from the board? It does not have to. You know, if I say something, it doesn't mean it's from the board. But this is an opportunity, if the board would like, to do it as a board.
Can I say one more thing? Much has been made of, there is this silent population out there that is in favor but just hasn't spoken. And I would be unhappy if my silence were interpreted as support. So that's another piece of my opinion. But again, I can say something as an individual, it doesn't, if the board doesn't want to do it also.
No, but to that point, because I don't think that's a terrible idea, would it be appropriate to request of the town that they show evidence of the population that they, or the majority that they, you know, that is claimed?
I believe that that has been requested by the boat club.
I think it's was.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't mean that we can't ask, you know, certainly add that to the mix to say, you know, we've heard that there's a suggestion that there's a large minority. Yes, but that's a, you know, it's something, as I say, that's sort of, it's always hard to write a letter as a group, but, yeah, Tony.
I'm somewhat ignorant of this issue, but certainly I see the signs around. Again, I guess my question is too formal. One, this seems to be the jurisdiction solely of the town. Secondly, do we really have a dog in this fight? You know, certainly as public citizens, we all have the ability to address any concerns one way or the other to the town board. But as a board, again, do we have a dog in this fight?
So I would say that we do have a dog in this fight because.
I hate to use that.
No, I understand. But I like to refer to the village of Red Hook as the heart of the town. We are the center of the town. And we represent a particular group that are all town residents also. And the, trying to think of the right words to use, but the feeling of a lot of people that they're not being heard and that they're not being considered, I think, has a direct impact on us as village residents and us as village officials. I have certainly felt it.
We also have, I would argue, a stake in this through the Community Preservation Fund as the village also pays into that. And it could be used by its own definition for the purchase of public spaces within the village to be dedicated to open space or agricultural in the future. So uses of the Community Preservation Fund do affect the village's potential ability to use that fund or to request use of it.
And my next question is, is this a fait accompli already?
No.
No.
What is what a fait accompli?
The purchase of the town.
The purchase of the purchase? It is my understanding that they do have one more vote that they need to take. But I'm not an expert on this at all. There is also, I believe there's already an initial lawsuit. So they'll have to resolve that lawsuit before. And there's, they have to determine what fair market value is. I mean, I think they have a framework, but, and then there's the whole procedure, so. So, as my mother would say, so buttons on ice cream. Even that saying so is not very useful. We have an opportunity here. We have a draft of a letter. I think that we as a board need to decide if we want to pursue sending the letter as a board or not. I think if we, if there's not a consensus on the board, then we shouldn't do that. If there is a consensus on the board, then we have, you know, sort of the final wordsmithing of a couple of the things that we could add to the letter. of a couple of the things that we could add to the letter. So Amy, I think if I speak for you, you would like to send the letter.
I would.
Tony?
I'm not gonna move it.
Okay. Mel Corca?
I would like to send it.
Great.
Version.
I would prefer if it came from, for instance, the mayor as opposed to the board.
Okay. Yeah, this is not something I wanna do, not unanimously, so...
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
If, is it a thing ever where, like, people sign as individual trustees, and then people are allowed to not sign? Like, is the only option full board or only the mayor?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I mean, trustee, you know, still, elected officials, I think...
I think it could be a letter from those of the board who would like to...
Who would like to send.
Yeah. Who would like to?
Does that make people who would not like to feel uncomfortable, just?
What's that?
Would it make you feel uncomfortable if the letter was from people signing as trustees?
Because it would be on letterhead, is that what you mean?
Well, right, it would say that it wasn't the board, it would say it was the mayor and whoever, as individuals.
I'd worry that it'd just exacerbate the situation. I mean, obviously, there's a dispute out there, and it's just not one way. Again, do we have a dog in this fight? I don't think we do. What I know of the situation...
So here's what I'm gonna suggest, 'cause I don't know that we're gonna completely solve this this evening. I'd like to have some conversations, because I think there's a question of whether or not, you know, having some of the board, not all of the board, could we be adding to the sense of conflict? I don't know, and that's not helpful. And so I'm gonna table this for right now, and we will, since it won't be a board thing, we can have some individual conversations about it going forward. But good discussion, and I think it's, you know, and this is...
Wait, there's...
This is...
Tony is suggesting that a potential rewrite would be...
Well, and that's part of why, that's part of why I like to, you know, Tony, you know, to, in your defense, this is your first meeting, and so it's a lot to sort of throw at you. So I think tabling it for this moment and having some further conversations, I think, is warranted. And whether or not we put it on the August workshop is something that we can decide. And I think this is an important conversation to have, because it is something that shouldn't be done lightly. And I think it's a very, it's an unfortunate situation, that I think really is creating significant consternation within the broader community. And I think, and that's really where I come from. And I do think it's something for us to consider, is that we are not the town, and that even just, and yes, could there be a rewrite that rearranges it in a way that isn't necessarily... I mean, again, I think because we are the center of the town, we do have a dog in this fight, whether or not this is the right way to address it is a question.
And I think as local leaders, we have a responsibility to speak out if we think something is being done that's not in the interest of our constituents.
I think also, there are not very many bodies that have the authority to invoke eminent domain, and so I think it is appropriate for other bodies that have that authority to weigh in.
I move, re-table this to another...
Yeah, yep, it's going to be.
Yep, done. And just to identify the fact that our workshop meeting is August 25th, our next board meeting is September 8th. I probably should just have that put at the very bottom of this, rather than where it is.
True.
The next item is our wonderful treasurer, Beth Phillips.
Very patient.
With her brand-new mic stand.
Has it gotten warmer out there?
Good evening.
Oh, warmer. Do you guys more comfortable out in the... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
So the news from the Treasury Department is that we have funded our first two New York class accounts.
Perfect, then, of course.
Isn't that always the way?
Looking near, I would not.
That'll go off again, sorry.
I think going on camera's a relief.
Excuse me. I'll start all over again. The news, the news is that we funded our first two New York class accounts. They were particularly well-timed. As the mayor mentioned, we took in a million three point six seven in taxes so far, and a good deal of that was transferred to our New York class account. We transferred a million three on July 24th, and just one week later, we had earned $1,181.79 in interest. So it can be a significant revenue source for us in the future, although we don't expect to always have that high a balance in the account. We also took advantage of having increased funds in the water, in our water fund account, taking in $171,000 in utility payments so far. We transferred, oh, okay, here, we transferred $150,000, is that better?
Is it on?
Is it on?
Is it on? I don't know which way is on. You just need to talk, speak into it and keep speaking, 'cause it doesn't pick up right away. Speak right into the mic.
Turned off automatically.
Maybe it's... You are the New York Class Water Fund?
Yes. We transferred $150,000 into the New York Class Water Fund with proceeds from our utility payments, which were $171,000 toward the month of July.
Hold on, there's a lot of feedback.
I'm hearing it's still on the mic, so if you want to just turn that off. I'm still able to pick you up.
Oh, you're still getting it from this mic? Okay. So perhaps, just speak up.
Is it on or off?
I think it's now on.
It is now, yeah.
The light is on.
Oh, well, maybe it's on?
It sounds gone.
Speak away.
Okay, so in our New York Class General Fund, we have $1,301,181.79. In our General Fund, with a reduction of the $1,300 transfer, we have $362,93.7. In our New York Class Water Fund, we have $150,136.36. In the Water Fund account, with that reduction, we have $203,435.93.
Mary Beth, if I can just interrupt you, I believe the $136.36 is the interest that has been earned so far in the Water Fund piece.
Yes, for one week.
Yeah, we didn't put in $151.36. We didn't go to 36 cents, so.
Our Sewer Fund holds $32,803.45. The Payroll Clearing Account holds $59,357.18. The Hardscrabble Account holds $5,994.48. Village Brain Account has $5,264.68. The Health Insurance Deductible Account holds $10,390.57. As for our Reserve Checking Balances, our Fire Department Reserve Account has $10,574.79. The Police Department Reserve Account has $18,170.97. Our USDA Water Reserve Account has $147,850.84. The Highway Reserve Account has $606.76. Our Snow Reserve Account has $3,491.51. Our Tower Reserve Account has a balance of $18,856.52. Our Unaffluent Reserve Account has $7,479.62. Our Court Reserve Account has $3,00, excuse me, $3,511.86. And our Office Reserve Account has $1,035.39. As for our monthly expenses for the month of July, our General Fund, we spent $202,860.42. In our Water Fund, we had monthly expenses of $150,139.55. In our Payroll Clearing Account, we had expenses of $2,600.72. And in the Sewer Fund, we had expenses of $19,784.74. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you very much. Any questions from me, anybody? I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
It's a move.
Thank you, Tony, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to reports. So, police report, for the month of July, there were 297 incidents, 163 of those were in the Village of Red Hook, 114 in the town, and 20 in the Village of Tivoli. Water tower security checks, 118. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 65, 47 of those in the Village of Red Hook, 13 in the town of Red Hook, and five in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were eight in the Village of Red Hook, none in the town of Red Hook, and one in the Village of Tivoli. There were three arrests, two in the Village of Red Hook, one in the town of Red Hook, and none in the Village of Tivoli. Fire Department report, I have June, I believe I reported on May at the last meeting. So in the month of June, in the village, there were a total of 18 incidents. And just to confirm, Amy, you had asked the question of, is this the number of calls, or is this the number of calls that the fire department responded to? These are the dispatches, these are not the responses.
Okay.
That's sort of next on my list.
Yeah.
And so of the 18 calls in, or dispatches in June, 15 of them were EMS types, two were alarms, and one was Assistant Village Service Call Person in Distress nature. Sewer Department?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
This is the town's special detail, but the town board reading, where the IRPD was present is not listed there. It is...
No, it's not listed there, because, I mean, it references Bar College, so that would've been an incident at Bar College.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, what we talked about, the contract.
Let me confirm, because obviously, that's not where it was put. I'm not sure what...
Yeah, so in, there's special detail. And can we just look at that?
Yes, we can certainly look.
Yeah, it's not, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Well, that's, that would be...
That's the caucus.
That is the caucus.
And that it's 7:15 is the date of that board meeting, where there were multiple...
I will confirm where that ended up, because yes, that's a special, that's a special request. I gave you the regular sewer report, and I just have a few things, and then I have something on the Phase Two Sewer. So for July, we have hired Irene Holzapfel for the position of Payroll Counterpart to take over from Angela Dortis, who will be officially retiring on August 18th. We look forward to welcoming Irene to the village, her first day is tomorrow. We have water projects, the deduct change order that we already discussed, that will finalize that project. For the sewer project Phase One, the major outstanding item has been the single audit. We received the final from the audit firm on July 31st, 2025, and that has formally been submitted to the federal government as required for a single audit as of today. The final MWBE report from Carver Construction has been submitted to EFC. Carver did not meet their WMBE goals, they have requested an additional waiver, which has been shared with EFC. Benner Road Tributary Coalition, I met with Zoe Evans and Kat Viega on Thursday, July 31st. We discussed a project of evaluating the wetland around the wastewater treatment plant and a plan for improving the health of the wetland. We discussed possible grant opportunities going forward, more to come on this. I will bring, I'm sure that we will, we are actively looking for appropriate grants to apply for this. I'm gonna come back to Sewer Project Two. Sawkill Watershed Committee, the committee presented their report from their extensive sampling done on April 6, 2025. This presentation was made on July 16 at Town Hall. A recording is available on Panda TV, it's pandatv.org. The report is also available on their website, sawkillwatershed.org/ourwork/waterqualitymonitoring. It's a very interesting report, they had 16 different sites where they took samples. The Red Hook Library had their board meeting on July 17th. I have to say that I did not update my notes here, for, I was in attendance, and I will update my notes for the next board meeting. Public Spaces, Abrams Park, we met on Saturday, August 2nd. The new charge for the committee was discussed, the committee agreed to move their meetings. Here we go, the third Monday of the month, the next meeting will be August 18th at 7:00 PM. Climate Smart Community Task Force, the task force did not meet in July, and we had a meeting this past Saturday, which I will report on at the next meeting. And then I'm just gonna finish up with the Phase Two project. So there were both the Benner Road Tributary Coalition and subsequently several residents requested that the village rescind the resolution adopting a negative declaration after completing the full environmental assessment form on July 15, 2024. I have reviewed this with our land use attorney and Delaware Engineering, who both assisted in its preparation for their review and response. And I have received a response from the town, sorry, from Delaware Engineering, and I have also, I also reviewed it with our land use attorney, as I mentioned. I have also put together a response to some of the items that were not directly responded to by Delaware Engineering. And Delaware Engineering does not recommend, does not recommend that we review, that we rescind our negative declaration. And in my review, I also do not see a need to rescind, that rescinding the negative declaration for Phase Two is not required. I think the fundamental piece is, when these requests were coming up, it was surrounding the sewer operations not operating as they are required to operate. And what we have seen and shared and tested is that we are now operating correctly, and that the discharge of partially-treated sewer sewage, I guess is the right word, is generally considered to be a temporary impact, and that as time continues on, that the impact of that will dissipate. I will say that I have gone down to the discharge site, and I have walked the wetlands several times. I have lots of pictures that I will put together at some point, probably at the next information session.
Pictures of sewage?
Pictures of the discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. And it's clear water. I know somebody's trying to be humorous. I take this very seriously, I have to say. I take this very seriously, I have to say. And we've come a long way. And so the review of the Phase Two sewer project has to be made with the context of proper operation, because that's a given, and we absolutely have to operate properly. And that, you know, one of the comments was, it says there's no wildlife. Well, there's a, there's a, there's a definition of wildlife, so of course there's squirrels, and of course there are deer and possibly wild turkeys and fox. But that's sort of considered standard for an urban environment. So I have made a copy of my letter and the response from Delaware engineering. I'm going to give each of you a copy, and I want you to review it. And I'd like you to ask me questions, or, you know, reach out so we can have a discussion. And if you would like to discuss further, I am 100% open to doing that. I didn't, because I am giving this to you tonight, we're not going to, you know, it's really not appropriate because you don't have a chance to read it, but I want to put it out there. I will also be sharing this with all of the different people who made this request. And, and then, and we'll proceed from there. But this was a thorough, thoughtful review. And, and I think, you know, I am comfortable with my determination that rescinding is not required. But again, I want to share all that with you, give you all an opportunity to, and we can certainly discuss it at a meeting, at a, in a future date. So I did want to share that, because this is something that, that folks have been asking about. Just need to read this. And so there's that, so that, that's an important thing to report on. And then the one other thing, the CPA grant application that the board approved at our July workshop was submitted on July 30th, and the due, the due date was July 31st, so we got it in a day early. And so we will not hear, I don't, I don't expect we're here until February, but it's out there. And that's it for me. So Deputy Mayor, Carol, you're up.
Okay, just one thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you or can, can you send an email of your, of your letter?
Sure, absolutely.
It's easier for me to read on my computer.
That's very funny, because it's much easier for me to read paper. Everybody has their perspective, but yes, absolutely, I have scanned it, I will send it to you.
Okay, Reddick Together meets every first Thursday of the month. There's no meeting in August, and the next meeting will be Thursday, September 4th at 12:00 PM noon at the Red Hook EFW. The Village of Red Hook Indigenous History Project historian Heather Burghill has shared the latest update on continuing my research, which has been a longer task than anticipated. Despite the difficulty in getting replies from those I've contacted, I'm still finding relevant material. I'm still on track to deliver the essay and resources by October 1st deadline. I'm hoping to send a draft by mid to late August. I will update the board once we receive the draft essay. Town of Red Hook Comprehensive Plan. Town Red Hook Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met on Tuesday, July 22nd. In attendance were the committee members, town liaison Christine Kane, and also the committee chair Julia Solomon, patterns for progress Eric Pearson, and a representative from the New York Department of State Amanda Wild. Wild explained the Smart Growth Community Planning Program Assessment Criteria. The town comprehensive plan is being funded through a New York State Smart Growth Grant, and the town is required to demonstrate in their plan that they have considered smart growth principles, such as community background, mixed-use neighborhoods, diversity of housing, infill and redevelopment, public spaces, compact neighborhoods, open space, alternative transportation, climate resilience and mitigation, subs- place, and community engagement. On Thursday, August 7th, the mayor and I also met with Patterns for Progress Planner Eric Pearson to discuss ways in which the town and village currently work together to provide services and/or have infrastructure that will lapse. The committee meets monthly from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday at Town Hall. Village of Reddick Communications. In order to comply with the New York State law, the village website and all village emails use a .gov domain, redhookvillage.gov. The Red Hook Police are also in the process of having their email address updated from redhookpolice.com to redhookpolice.gov. So look out for that. Please update your email address books as well as website links accordingly. Village and zoning review, there was a meeting held on August 7th, 2025. In attendance was the mayor, myself, the village planning attorney Victoria Paldero Esquire, Bonnie Fransen from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, which is a firm who was hired to write the proposed Gateway North Law. We discussed feedback from Reddick Co. at a previous July meeting and applied edits to sections of the draft law. Once the new edits have been incorporated, there are plans to schedule an information session to explain law's intent in detail, and invite discussion and feedback from the public. Leads to the 2/26/25 draft of the Gateway North Law are linked in the March 13th Special Workshop Agenda.
Um, Mel, just quick, was Adrian there also?
Yes, I apologize, yeah, I didn't include her.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So would that constitute a public hearing of the law, or is that...
No, because I think...
Or it's still draft law, and so there would still need to be a public hearing after that?
Yes, so once, once it's finalized, then, then we go through the public hearings. But the idea is that we want to really work on public engagement, get everyone up to speed with the intent and whether or not they think that the law is doing that.
And to clarify, we had, we had an initial information session in February, March?
I think it was actually in, yeah, February, the 2/26.
Oh, there you go, right there. Sorry.
No, March 13th, sorry. Read your update.
Yeah, and so this would be, because we will be, we will have, we have made some adjustments. It was an opportunity to have a more, a more informal conversation before we went to the full law and public hearing.
We got a lot of really great feedback at that, that meeting, so hopefully, yeah. We will invest in the zoning laws and where, what they are.
Yeah, and Adrian is with the firm?
Uh, yes, with the...
Nelson Pope and Voorhees.
Yes, what's, what's his last?
Her.
Adrian?
It's actually Adrian, I thought it's Adriana.
Oh, okay.
Beltrani, Beltrani, it's in line too, B-E-L-T-A-N-I, I think. Because she was in the meeting.
I'm hoping for a female, Adrian, who just didn't you?
Maybe it's Adriana, yeah, Adriana.
Yeah, Beltrani, right, or was it, is it Beltrani?
Beltrani.
Trani, T-R-A-N-I.
Thank you.
Okay.
So then...
Sorry, do you mind if I, I just had a question for you about, and I know this predates my joining the board, about the historian here, and I believe previously, this is someone that the village contracted, I think, or has, with payment. I have a question about what their deliverables are. Like, I see here that she mentions having difficulty getting replies for, so if you, if you wouldn't mind educating me on what exactly we've committed to with her, or what she's owing us.
We have a contract that's actually in past minutes that I can pull up and share with you, I can email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to go into it now?
No, 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 if you, if you wouldn't mind sending me the contract, then I can...
Probably was sending that to Tony as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Building permits issued, sorry, I'm going into the building department. Building permits issued this, in July 10th, certificates of occupancy issued, two. Certificates of compliance, 15, municipal searches, five, notice of violations, two. One was in the CVS EV charging stations, and the other was 7592 North Broadway parking.
And just to clarify, the EV charging stations at CVS, CVS took them out, but they're part of their site plan?
You have code, they were...
They were told they couldn't do that, and they did.
That's interesting to know. Planning Board Actions, July 10th, 2025 meeting, the site plan for St. John Street and Le Grand was tabled to August 14th. The signage approval granted to 19 West Market Street for the Bliss Juice and Smoothie Bar. Site plan for 7481 South Broadway, Kitner, was tabled to August 14th, and a public hearing is scheduled. And there was no meeting for the zoning board of appeals in July due to no agenda. And the total income to the building department in the month of July was 1,425 dollars. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you very much. Trustee Uku.
Well, thank you. So in the interest of time, and also, mainly time. I'm going to refer everyone to the Materials Management Report, the Resource Recovery Data for the month of July. I have the following expenses. Well, revenue first, it's nice to start with revenue. So we have total tags sold in the month of July, it's 2,848 dollars. And our revenue, yes, that's our revenue. And then as far as our costs, including garbage, fuel, our recycling, we did have $2.70 in contaminated recycling cost. So it would be good if residents would review the recycling guidelines we have on the website and also that I have included in the minutes tonight. So we did have a total recycling amount of 1.87 tons. And everything else is as appears on the, on the website, linked to in the agenda. For, for, for scrap, I have numbers for report for scrap metal. This is actually the wrong amounts I have here in your binder, so I will read the updated amounts. And thank you to the mayor for spotting this. Our revenue received since the last report as of, in July is 1,395 dollars. The total revenue for this fiscal year, which is from June 2025 to May 2026, I have it incorrectly listed, in your notes, in, in the binder. So that amount for this fiscal year is 1,395 dollars, which is the same amount as has been taken since June. Since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of 5,000, 56,912 dollars and 24 cents. And just a reminder, the proceeds from the program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the Public Works Department, and residents and businesses interested in donating metal may contact the village clerk's office to schedule a pickup. I would expect to have normally a village green report and a compost program report. However, due to bereavement, I do not have those at this time. I will have full reports available in September. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Smith?
So the water department's first. Water department meeting was on Wednesday, August 6th at Villatall, I was unable to attend. However, I can report on water usage and testing results. In the month of July, village water department customers used, again, almost nine million gallons of water for an average consumption of 286,836 gallons per day. Comparatively, July's water use is 2,746 more gallons per day, the average, than it was in June, and 842 fewer gallons per day than in May. I figure giving people some sense of comparison is helpful. Three locations were sampled on July 23rd, 2025. All three locations were negative for coliform and E. coli. The free chlorine residual amounts ranged from 0.87 milligrams per liter to 0.13 milligrams per liter. And as a reminder, there are 1,000 milligrams in liter of water. I will jump to the utility billing, which I did not have when I wrote my things, but is here. So, the, in July, the village water sewer department issued 202,549 dollars and 42 cents in utility bills. There were no penalties or finance charges issued. We received, the village received 171,171 dollars and 45 cents in utility bill payments, which leaves us, the outstanding accounts receivable is 39,167 dollars and 39 cents. I will now talk about the New York Forward slash grants. The events stuff has been more than covered, so I didn't put it in there. So on Tuesday, August 5th, the mayor and I met with Adriana Beltrani and Bonnie Fransen from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, the village's planning consultants. We discussed the village's preparation and possible timeline for submission of a New York Forward grant application. Communities that have received New York Forward grants have some common elements in terms of preparation, including planning documents and engineering reports. We determined that it's in the village's best interest if we apply for a Greenway Community Grant, that is a state agency, that will allow us to complete a community visioning process through their plans slash public participation category of funding. Greenway Grants Application opens September 8th and is due October 30th. Notices, if awarded, likely December, but no guarantees. So the Hudson River Valley Greenway, just for context, is, and I'm quoting from their website, and I should have put the reference because I am a librarian, but I did not. Is a state agency that helps communities protect their scenic, natural, historic, cultural, and recreational resources while encouraging economic development, which is a weighty balance. The agency works with municipalities like the village that are located in the 14 New York counties that constitute the Hudson River Valley. Municipalities submitting applications for grant funding must have passed a resolution adopting the five Greenway criteria, which are as follows. Natural and cultural resource protection, I put afterwards, I mean, these are their bullet points, I put what it means according to them. So protect, preserve, and enhance natural resources. Economic development, encourage economic development that is compatible with the preservation and enhancement of natural and cultural resources. Public access, promote public use of the Hudson River Valley's natural resources. Heritage and environmental education, promote awareness among residents and visitors about the valley's natural, cultural, scenic, and historic resources. And regional planning, work with other communities to develop mutually beneficial regional strategies for natural and cultural resource protection, economic development, including necessary public facilities and infrastructure, public access, and heritage and environmental education. So I see those things.
Well, I was going to say, just as an aside, it's not clear that we didn't do a resolution in the past, but, sorry.
Well, that's why, no, I was just going to say, the reason I put those five in is that we do think we have received, the village received Greenway funding in the past. It's a necessary precursor to pass this resolution. We just don't know exactly what that date was.
Haven't done the research to, to fund it.
So the Greenway Community Grants have a maximum of 20,000 dollars. That must be matched by the municipality, but the match can be in cash, in kind, or a mix of the two. They allow...
Is it a 50/50 match?
It is, but their definition of in kind is not only staff, but also they have a calculator for, for, like, making a dollar value on volunteer time as well, as some other things that are not, not things that I, as a grant writer, see very often, so. The grants can be used for a variety of purposes related to the Greenway criteria. Among those are both planning and public participation. We finished our discussion with a plan that the village will apply for a Greenway Community Grant to fund a process of what we're calling community visioning, that will allow the village to get residents' input on prioritizing different projects, primarily related to improvements to the pedestrian experience, infrastructure required for affordable housing and economic development, and creation of green spaces within the village. It will likely be necessary to form an ad hoc committee as part of the community visioning process. But I'm just putting that out there, we're not doing that now. I will write the grant in collaboration with Adriana Beltrani, and will report on it in greater detail at our next meeting.
What will the purpose of the ad hoc committee be?
To run the community visioning process.
The community, yeah, the, the community visioning process is really a precursor to a comprehensive plan. Because our comprehensive plan, we haven't done a full-blown comprehensive plan since 1968. We have done a variety of significant amendments. But one of the things that we talked about was sort of taking all of that and, and getting a significant community input and creating a new, whether it's a formal comprehensive plan or if it's a revised, updated document that we use for sort of the vision and the planning of the village going forward. But in order to get significant... But in order to get significant community input, that's a lot of what the Greenway grant would be, would provide for.
The money would be used for essentially a variety of, well, created and also, like created by the village, but then also added, like tabling at or interacting with a previously existing meeting. Different ways that people can share their ideas and their values, but then also some targeted, like focus group discussions, for example, with business owners of the village, just as a random example of many.
And we even had talked about doing block parties in each of the quarters.
Yes, we would do a block party in each quadrant to.
Food and with a focus of, we just want to get your input, yeah. The idea of going to where people are rather than requiring them to come to us.
It's building on the way in which the, what do we do in the parking lot?
Neighbor's night?
Neighbor's nights, but making them in different neighborhoods to make it easier. And of course, food, because people have conversation.
Now, you also have speed limit, school speed zone.
Yes, I do, but I'm not going to do a.
However, the person to your right probably has something he'd like to share as it relates to speed and traffic comment. So he would, I know that we.
She's talking about you wanting Grave Street.
You brought up the temporary speed bumps that were.
Cherry Street.
We, so when we do, when we do the, I mean, the idea is to try out a temporary speed bump. I don't know that we'll do a lot, so I would imagine that we would be more likely to just do Grave Street. I think the biggest issue on Cherry is that people don't stop at the stop sign. And so there are potentially different things we can do than a speed bump. I mean, yeah, if we were to place a police officer at each of, there are a couple of stop signs that are frequently not observed.
I just see it every day, every single day I see it. And let me tell you a story. I mean, one of the things you're gonna realize, I got thousands of stories, but yesterday, this little girl, she can't be five years old, just walking down the street by herself. Her mother's around the corner with her younger sister, all right? Now, I see cars coming 15, 16 miles an hour down my street and trucks, pickups, right? Today, that same little girl was building, or chalking a hopscotch, and then, you know, at the Masonic Lodge parking lot, but it's going out into the street. And I'm thinking to myself, I just, I don't want to see somebody killed. I see people walking their dogs. There's one lady who goes back and forth numerous times a day, just talking to her dog, you know? I see kids on bicycles or one wheel, you know, I'm envious of them. But I think it's just so dangerous. People come from 199, and to avoid the light, they go down Grave Street, and especially now that it's been paved. I just don't want to see something killed, you know?
And I can tell you that there are other areas in the village that have similar concerns.
I'm sure.
And I can also, as one of two rural representatives in the Dutchess County Transportation Council, that is an issue countywide. It's probably statewide and probably countrywide. I think following the pandemic, people, I don't know, it feels like it's worse than before the pandemic, but it is definitely a conversation that pretty much every municipality has. So I think that was sort of the idea behind trying a, because of a permanent speed bump or speed hump, it creates some issues with the snowplows.
Well, we discussed that, they can take up the, no, permanent ones, yes.
Permanent ones, but.
But that's why, that's why I'm looking at the temporary ones. And so the DPW foreman is talking to a supplier. I told him it was up to him as to which kind we get, and so he may try a couple. So to see, to see how it works.
And there will likely be more than one spot where we try.
I would expect at this point, we've talked about doing Fisk Street towards Route 9, because that's where the road really starts to narrow.
Where it curves.
If you're walking, if you've got a dog and you've got the cars and they, I mean, there's just.
Where does it?
Fisk, towards Route 9.
Where it turns.
Where, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where.
I'm just wondering how close it's gonna be.
It's not, I mean.
It hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
We'll chat, and I think another logical place is Grave Street.
Yeah, I think also in both those places, there are bus stops at the corner, Graves as well. So where people are coming down, so it would be before the bus stop.
But yeah, I just wanted to get, I knew that you, I wanted to make sure that we got your comments and concerns for your neighbors. Because there's certainly, you know, Fran and your neighborhood, well, Fran and Amy in your neighborhoods.
That's really terrible.
It's true.
I, I will say, on Garden Street, I was coming along Church Street, and I got there first, and I was about to pull out, there was someone coming along. And I kind of hesitated, they didn't even slow down.
Yeah, you have to always block.
It's a stop sign.
People do not know how to behave at four-way stops.
That was a three-way even.
Well, that's true.
But anyway, so, yes, we have a general issue with people following. Some of the speed, it feels a lot faster than it might, than it actually measures. 30 miles an hour is very fast when you're standing there. So some of it may be not as fast as you think. But it's also why we're continuing to look into 25 miles an hour in the village. So that work continues.
I just had a question there because I know Amy had been working on that. Are we discussing?
We don't have any updates on that for this evening.
The school, the meetings that you were, the school speed zone updates at the last two meetings was getting data from the schools because our consultant report didn't indicate that there was a, they didn't observe a lot of pedestrian kids walking to school or biking to the high school. So I requested data from the Transportation Department and the Superintendent's Office in terms of how many kids live within, or how many households within the area had students, within the area where they won't qualify for busing, have students in order to, you know, help make that. But yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay, I do need a motion to approve vouchers after audit. Thank you, Fran, second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
And just a reminder, all vouchers are upstairs. And I know that our treasurer would love to cut those checks tomorrow if possible. Any other, any other general business items?
Just one, just returning to, this is a question I'd received from the Village Green Committee. What are the rules or the parameters for tabling at Hard Scrabble? How would, if a committee was interested in having?
Email the, well, there's two ways.
If they were to email the events email at this point, or you wanted to go to Jeff?
Yeah, so there's two options. There's an, the website has a form.
The website.
The Hard Scrabble, hardscrabbleday.org. But the other option is the email address that you have there for, it's redhook, H-E-I-C? Yeah, redhook, no, redhook H-E-C, sorry, at gmail.com. They are coordinating the tabling.
They are coordinating tabling?
Yeah.
Because the address we have on here is the events at Red Hook Village, so.
No, his contact.
No, I mean on the website.
Oh, right, we need to, we have a fair amount of updating on the website.
Oh, okay.
It's still on.
I mean, that'll work too. It'll just.
We've got a lot of things that are in flux.
The events, the events email will also work. You will just get a more, a quicker response if you go directly.
It's okay, it's just because it's a committee, it's a village committee, so I wasn't going to send people outside, it's not, it's, but if the corporation is handling tabling, then I will, I'll just.
I mean, the village has a table, but yeah, they are organizing where the, where the tables are placed and, you know, that sort of information.
And so, and so the village, there's a, the village has a table, so we can also perhaps, Fran, talk about whether or not we just share that table as opposed to having a separate table, because we would have, you know, an eight-foot-long table. We have a village tablecloth, we have a tent, so we could sort of split that as a possibility.
And we've done that before, where all the village committees were part of the village then.
That's great, this Village Green is asking in particular, and also Condos, so.
Great. Any other general business for this evening? Any public comment? I don't.
Seeing none.
Seeing none, no executive session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.